And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? For a second time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? For a third and final time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? Chief None, public portion of those at six oh two. Well, it's right over to our student representatives.
Hi, I'm Jennifer. How are you doing today?
Again.
We have a portable microphone system today.
We're main now. To start out, um, winter sports are making a comeback. Captives are currently having captain's practices and trials are going to be at the end of this month and the beginning of December. This Friday is going to be the West Haven High School Theater's, um, opening night for almost made. Um, this Friday and Saturday. Last week, Ariana Rose was named athlete of the week. She's currently a freshman and she made it to states swimming the six hundred meters. Last week, the band's encore show held, um, their special halftime for families and friends. It was overall a really beautiful night. And we're going to continue with the tradition of Powder Puff, where the girls for all four years during the high school are going to play against each other on the twenty-sixth. And then the senior class is going to play against North Haven on that Monday, the twenty-fourth.
And to quickly add to that, um, um, so West Haven Winter Shopping Night were held at Bailey last week and, um, parents were able to, and students were able to get jackets and stuff of that nature. And me, myself, and another reporter, Ed Redd came in. Um, we're currently working on putting the QR codes around school to get the student voice also heard. So we can get enough, some other good things that are happening in our school and really get more of the student body involved in the education process. So we're working on that and we'll give that to you guys as we go along their journey. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to throw one plug in for Caitlin and the Westing High School cheerleaders are giving a fundraiser. They're doing Westing High School alumni cheer night. Looking around the room a little bit, I see a few former Westie cheerleaders that may be interested in, um, joining the team. Uh, and then Thanksgiving, next for Thanksgiving game, I will be there, probably the only one. Uh, maybe counseling, Captain Tucker might be there to maybe give a paneling. Uh, if anyone's interested, you can contact Caitlin or Coach Posky, um, to find out how you can participate. With that being said, my first show is over. I'm going to return my role in programming in this attendance report.
Thank you, Kevi. Um, you know, I really, um, we try it like that. Hopefully you can still hear me. Uh, so we're really excited today. Um, as you know, you saw on your agenda, you've got Bailey, we've got Bailey Middle School, and they're going to come and give a presentation. Um, you all know that we're an alliance school district. Every year, the school is chosen randomly, um, one of our districts and they, uh, in our district. Uh, the state comes down and monitors, they call it monitor, progress monitoring. Um, how are you utilizing the Alliance money and, you know, uh, what we're, what we're doing and what the results are? Well, we had gotten noticed that Bailey was the school that was chosen, because there was some concerns about them. And then our scores came out. And, um, it's not that Bailey should be congratulated, they made the largest gains, um, in our district. So we're really kind of, we can't wait for them to get here tomorrow, but they'll be here tomorrow from nine thirty till eleven thirty. Um, before I bring Karen on, um, and she'll introduce her staff again, thank you all for coming. Uh, you guys really did a wonderful job. I've seen and heard some of the presentation and they were, they're really excited to share, um, what they've been doing there and how they got the results that they got. And I don't think it was by act, I know it wasn't by accident. Um, but, uh, before I introduce them, um, you also know that last year we had four schools in distinction. Uh, each year, the state recognizes schools of foreclosing the achievement gaps, creating supportive environments where every student could thrive. Um, in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, that was last year's school year, we received the results from a hundred, hundred forty schools in Connecticut earned this recognition. Um, including thirty-four alliance districts. Of those thirty-four schools in the alliance district that were recognized, and there are thirty-six alliance districts. We had four of them, yeah.
Right, yeah.
It was a great accomplishment. Well, and I'm going to just, we're going to bring them to, uh, probably our first meeting in January. We'll do the budget, the second meeting, and we'll recognize them like we did last year. And Judy and the team will share some of the, we'll share the results with you guys in more detail. I'll just give you an overview tonight. But McQuill School was upgraded from a category-two school to category-one and recognized the school of distinction for high performance and high growth for all students in ELA in math, high growth for high need students in ELA in math. Savin Rock, uh, recognized as a school of distinction for high growth and high mean students in math. Washington Elementary was recognized as a school of distinction for high growth for all students in ELA in math. High growth in, for high need students in ELA in math. And Haley was, is, is being recognized as a school of distinction for high growth for all students in ELA in math and high growth for high need students in ELA in math. So certainly congratulations to them. Again, we'll bring them up so you can, um, hear about some of the great work that they're, they're doing at the schools. And again, it doesn't happen without your support. I always like to say that. Uh, just a couple of other things before I bring Karen on. Bailey, um, performance index decreased by ten points, which is a big deal. Uh, the school showed improvement in every indicator on the report card, which is terrific. West Haven High School, most indicators on the report card showed increases, including the percentage of students passing AP exam increased by ten percent. And our graduation rate also increased. So, uh, I really feel like we're doing good things in our school district. And, and again, we'd love to, we don't spend enough time talking about those things in board meetings. Um, but wanted you to be aware of it. Again, you'll get more on that later. Without further ado, though, I want to introduce Tara Dine and, uh, her team at Bailey. And it's your dad's birthday tonight, so she's got to get a birthday cake, so. Yeah, why don't you, I think you have to.
I turned this one off, so.
Thank you for, thank you for inviting me tonight to present. First, I'd like to start off and introduce some of the people that came with me today. So we have Colleen Pinkerton, our EL teacher, Mr. Millard, assistant principal, Lauren Cavalaro, our science facilitator, Dr. Charvado, our assistant principal, Jen Rava, our EL, uh, ELA, um, facilitator, Shayna, our writing facilitator, and Cindy Anastasio, our math facilitator. So before we start, we are going to talk, you know, the state is coming to see us tomorrow. And obviously review how we did as a school, but we couldn't do it without everybody, our teachers, the paras, secretaries, all our important staff. It really is a team effort, so everybody did a tremendous job and we're very proud of them. So obviously, in the main part of our student learning, how do we show all of those growths? So I'll just talk about the bubbles a little bit for you. So we did in all the indicators on our report card, we do have two packets. You have our presentation here and in the other packet that you have is information and will tell you, you can refer to the other booklet for some scores. So on the report card, the report cards are the last pages in your book. So the last page is this year's report card. So your indicators are for ELA, math, science, um, physical fitness, attendance, all of those indicators increased on the report card from the previous school year. So some of the things were increased parent-school connection. We want all parents to feel connected to the school, emails, phone calls, family game nights, we have plays. We have pep rallies. We want parents to be included in everything that we're doing at school. Obviously, communication is very important. We're sending out weekly emails, reminding them to go on Parent Portal to have their kids get involved in school. So that would be the first thing, that updating our website, making sure everything that we have to offer at Bailey is current on our website for parents to view. And so they know what we have available at the school. We did a lot of alignment with our curriculum. Where our specialists and facilitators were looking at the outline of our curriculum, looking at all of our tests, our quizzes, um, our classroom, our homework, how much are we counting everything, aligning all of our assessments that we have. So the teachers are working on that in collaboration and data throughout the year. Also, their team teaching and modeling lessons within the classroom. The administration is doing evaluations for all teachers, so we're looking at their strengths or weaknesses. Um, what they can work on to improve to help student learning in their classrooms. Do they need to go and watch another teacher? Do they need to have one of those facilitators come in? Do we need to provide more resources for the teachers? For family support here, we have a lot of things at Bailey that some, um, that right now we have the school-based health center, so that we have actually a van outside two days a week. And if a child is sick and the parents have filled out the paperwork for it, they could go right to the van and they could check if they have strep or they have an ear infection and they're able to provide them a prescription for the parents as well. We have bridges, we have Cornell Scott Hill Health. They can also offer in-school counseling, so the parents don't have to go outside to get it and they can have their counseling inside during the day.
Karen, do they do well because of school? Do they get their school physical done?
Yes, they can do shots and things like that, update any, any of the shots that they don't have that they need for, to enroll in the school, they can do that as well. We do have a pantry in our school, so we send that out. Any families that are in need of a pantry food item, so they have anything between toilet paper, shampoo, conditioner, mac and cheese, drinks, all the students are able to come to the pantry. We're able to give them a bag and send it home for the families. We do have an eagle outlet too, so in the eagle outlet, we have clothes. So if students need a sweatshirt or they need pants, we had our coat drive, we're able to access all clothing as well. Um, with our improved attendance, uh, we want our school to be more inviting. We want kids to come to school, right? So how are we getting them to come to school? Obviously, are they making a connection with the teacher? Are they making a connection with a social worker and a counselor? We're making phone calls, we're doing home visits. We have outreach workers that are contacting the families as well. We have academic recovery, so each marking period after the marking period, we're reviewing our grades. So we offer office hours, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. All the teachers have to stay one of those days and we do provide late buses. But if we have students that aren't passing, that are struggling, we offer academic recovery. So we have an ELA in math and it will be for about twelve weeks for the marking period. And they're able to improve their first marking period grade. Obviously, if they were failing, they can't go to an A, but they will be able to bring their grade up if they go to academic recovery. We do all the teachers on Tuesdays and Thursdays have data teams, um, and collaboration. So all the science teachers meet, all of the ELA teachers meet, it's content area. So they have one where it's all content area and the other period that the teachers have is team, so they can talk about kids on their team. So teams are consisted of ELA, math, science, and social studies. We do offer professional development throughout, um, our district. And also, we have our facilitators that are modeling lessons and modeling lessons and team teaching throughout the year. As I mentioned, we do have office hours, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, where we have late buses. So if students want to stay with a math teacher, they can stay on those days and get extra support from their curriculum teachers. We do have an SBA pep rally and we have student conferencing. So before our big test, we have a big pep rally to get the kids excited about our test. And we also have one-to-one conferencing and we show the kids where they were last year on their ELA math or science or last links data. And we show them areas that they can improve on, so that they know what to focus on when taking the test. The last thing that we did, we have about school clubs and sports. So we did have a book, I think we had like thirty-four. I didn't make a copy for everybody because a lot of paper. But we offer a variety of different clubs between chess club, board games, green thumb club, um, aviation club. So kids are able to sign up for the club and then stay after school and use a late bus to get home. We have a variety of different sports. We're utilizing finals forms, just like the high school. So we have soccer, cross-country, uh, basketball, baseball, softball. So we have a variety of different sports for the kids to engage in as well. So I think all of those things kind of sum up how we've targeted on improving student success. So what did our school look like last year? We had eight hundred and eighty-seven students, we have about sixty-six teachers. We have eleven academic teams, like I mentioned, in science, social studies, English and math. Um, there's four seventh-grade teams, four eighth-grade teams, one team is split. We do have one learning lab team and one shelter team, which is an EL team, which we'll explain when we get to that slide. But those students are last levels ones or twos. And on the right-hand side are all the support positions that we have in our building. If they talk about the alliance district, and you can see that in your packet that I have, the alliance districts are all listed there for you. If we look at our alliance and you look at ELA, ELA in math for seventh as well as eighth grade for ELA math and science, you can see where we are ranked out of the thirty alliance districts. And just to mention, we are first in science for our alliance district. If you look at our DIRG, um, all of them are up there for ELA in math as well as science in eighth grade. We're number one in our DIRG across all content areas. For ELA growth, we're looking at longitudinal data here. In seventh grade, we're up eight percent and in eighth grade, we're up nine percent. And I have Mrs. Rayba and Mrs. Zakowski here, they just tell you a little bit about what they're doing in the classroom.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm going to talk just a little bit about some of the interventions we have at Bailey that have had a positive impact on student learning. Um, first up, we use the Lexia Power Off program. And we use that program weekly in the ELA and social studies classrooms. And it really homes in on literacy skills and reading comprehension and is great at identifying any learning gap students may have. We also provide small group lessons, you know, if a student is struggling on a particular skill. So we feel like a lot of our growth, we can definitely attribute to Lexia. Um, another intervention that we have is our Lit Lab, and that is designed for our tier-two and tier-three learners. And it really focuses on our foundational skills, which aren't written into the regular grade-level classroom curriculum. Uh, but we've had a lot of success with that. Um, and finally, our last successful intervention is, uh, our academic recovery, which Mrs. Dine's already touched upon. Um, also, I know up here it says, um, ELA growth, but I definitely want to give a lot of credit to our social studies teachers. They really focus on a lot of the same skills and we would not have made this room without them. All right, I'm going to pass this over to our awesome writing teacher, Miss Day, Shayna Zizkaski.
I am see the S-Back Pep Rally and that's a lot less intimidating than this. Great. Um, so the biggest game changer was launching our school-wide writing initiatives to ensure consistency and alignment across all subjects. We're really focusing on weaving in, um, ELA and social study skills and S-Back language within our electives. So our digital literacy and current events have fully embraced S-Back language within their curriculum and even have writing assignments that use the same IC writing format that ELA and social studies both use. Um, at this point in October, every student has, or now we're not in October anymore, we're beyond that. Every student has taken two IAVs in ELA and social studies classes. They take literary text in their ELA class and informational text in their social studies class. And all students over eight hundred have participated in model lessons with me. That's why I'm losing my voice and I can't really speak right now, but it's been, it's been going really well. Um, during these lessons, we go over note-taking, reading strategies, S-Back test-taking strategies. We analyze different question types. I made copies of current responses that students are writing, so it's actually like the students this year. I had to make copies and we kind of go over their answers and read them together, assess them using the IC format that we use. Um, and that format is used from grade seven to twelve. Um, all students will take six practice IAVs before they actually take the S-Back test. Um, ELA and social studies departments use this data during their data teams to identify trends and changes that we need to make. Um, but our progress in writing instruction goes well beyond ELA. The real difference has been collaboration and buy-in across all the content areas. The ELA and social studies teachers have been so welcoming to me and really invite me in. It is so much fun. I get to see like every kid in the entire school. Um, and I try to have a lot of fun with them, so the teachers have really been so welcoming and just, I feel like we are such a team. You know, it used to be like ELA and social studies was more of a separate thing and now I really feel like we're all on the same page, all using the same language. And I feel like that really is why our growth is what it is. So again, social studies really has had a major impact.
For being intimidated, you had an excellent job. I'm sorry. Now I don't have to talk right for the rest of the, yes.
So we go on to our math growths. As you can see, longitudinal data as well here. In grade seven, we're up four percent and in grade eight, we're up six percent. And Mrs. Anastasio will give you.
Ellen, um, so, um, me and my fellow facilitator, um, we go into the classrooms and we are co-teaching. We're modeling lessons with our teachers and just as they said, so inviting, welcoming. Um, we are really working on aligning our curriculum across the grades to have common teaching strategies and vocabulary. Um, it's been so important to really get that aligned and being on the same page of what we're teaching, how we're teaching and building upon that. Um, we have been implementing the building thinking classroom model within the math classroom for students to promote discourse and student engagement. Um, that has been really, um, great for a lot of students to get their math thinking visual on the boards. We are incorporating algebra tiles to build conceptual understanding of equations. That has been really helpful for students that have been struggling, um, with that. But the algebra tile manipulatives have been really great for those students. And lastly, we, um, also have Delta Math, which has been a great tool for us to target students that are really just weak in some basic skills. So we've been trying to do these types of interventions and getting in the classroom too. And we think a lot of that has helped bring up our scores. If we go over to science, you can see in our science data, we have cross-sectional, um, science growth and we're up fourteen percent. And Mrs. Cavalaro will give us some information on science.
Hi, so I have a couple of things to share about, um, why we think we went up fourteen percent. Um, the first is our use of our state interim assessments. Each grade gives a minimum of six interim assessments throughout the year. And rather than use them as an evaluative tool, we use them as a teaching tool. So the teachers will model them, chunk them, um, they will have the students work and think, pair, share, and then come back together to discuss. Um, they'll have one student come to the board and everyone else will direct that student and they'll kind of debate and discuss and talk why something might be the best answer or the right answer. Um, and we think that this constant exposure in this manner really helps students, um, confident and familiar uh, with the assessment and they're ready to take it come April, come May. The second is our, um, benchmark assessments. We have some in-house assessments that we created, um, that we give in seventh and eighth grade in fall and in spring. And it's not a content-based assessment, it is the science and engineering practices. And that fall data will drive our data and collaboration times as we work through what were the weakest areas for students and teachers really do some nice collaborating and sharing and building on each other's lessons to show growth when they take that assessment again in the spring. And the last is our work with our vertical alignment at the K six level. Um, I know this is all about Bailey, but we've actually done a lot of work, um, in grades three, four, five, and six to increase the rigor of our assessments. Um, all of the assessments now at those levels mirror and GSS, so students are exposed a lot earlier on. We've also revised the classroom teacher lessons to, um, make science a lot more straightforward for the classroom teachers and more engaging and to kind of build that foundation, so students are ready for seventh grade science. So I think all of those things have definitely contributed to that fourteen.
Mr. Millard will present on our special education data.
So as you're hearing, uh, there's definitely a theme of everyone improving that does not stop with special education. If you'll notice, our special education group for, uh, over, uh, there's number one in our DIRG across all the content areas in the twenty-four, twenty-five school. We also are number one for the growth across the DIRG in three of the four areas that are evaluated. So there's definitely been improvements. For our higher needs data, you'll see that there's been constant growth from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. These are the students that are, are high needs, bring reduced lunch, special education, and are ELL students. It's time I'll introduce Dr. Wendy Shannon.
So our next slide is going to show what we've done over these past two years, um, prior to last year. But in twenty-three, twenty-four, we started a sheltered content team only of EL students that scored either a level one, a level two, or a level three in the Lost Links. In order to exit out of that program, you have to score to a level four. So we included all of them. We modeled it after the high school. They do a sheltered content program over here. And basically what that means, if you have a content area teacher that is burst in EL strategies to help bridge the gap between the language of the content and the language needs of learning English as well. So in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, you could see that we had exited twenty-eight students. And we approved upon that last year by including only level one and two students into that group of cohort of students. But we added in for our level three students in EL academic lab class. And that was taught by Ms. Pinkerton and she's going to ta-talk for a quick second just about what strategies are in there. Also, within our cohort program, we also have an EL level one and an EL level two, which is taught by her other teacher, Ms. Vitale. And she's going to explain the difference between the two. And I really feel that these two programs within itself have helped boost up the scores. So last year, we had forty-six students also exit. And so that really helped because it's usually our level threes that kind of are stagnant for a while and it kind of helps to have this academic lab that pushes them through. So she really focuses on those skills necessary to get this improved growth. So I'm just going to turn it over to her to have, let you know what she's doing.
So for our shelter team, that's only, like she said, last levels one and two. And they focus on the modified curriculum, so they do everything that the mainstream classes do, but just in a modified version. And then for the academic lab classes, so the level ones and twos focus more on the vocabulary development. So these are students that have been here really like one to three years. And then for my class, that's the level threes and fours. So that's a bridge to their full academic independence in the mainstream classes. So they're already in mainstream classes. I'm more just of an extra support for them. So I use the Lost Links, um, like, uh, topics. So we do reading, writing, speaking, and listening activities. And I did not do that the first year. The first year I did something different. And I feel like doing that last year, we exited eighteen more students, so it seemed to really work.
So part of our report card two is a physical fitness assessment. So on the physical fitness, you see that they do sit and reach curl-ups, push-ups, and a mile or a pacer test. They can have either or, and they have to pass all four in each to count, um, for our score. So you can see in twenty-three, twenty-four, we're at forty-three point three percent. And we went up to, um, fifty-three percent, so we're up ten percent. So I just kind of analyzed where, um, aside, we were kind of falling short. And you can see that we kind of struggled in the mile and pacer and then push-ups. So this year, the gym teachers are focusing on making sure that every day they're doing a pacer test or they're outside running, as well as doing stations around the gym where it's sit-ups, push-ups, something to make sure that they're doing it daily within gym class. Um, the last one on our report card that we have is the attendance. So you can see all students in twenty-three, twenty-four, we're at twenty-nine percent and high needs were thirty percent. And we decreased, so we came down to twenty-two percent. And obviously, some of the things on the right-hand side, monthly attendance meeting, parent-school connection, phone calls, home visits, our food pantry, our eagle outlet, the school supports, and as well as the school-based health centers. And obviously, this last slide is kind of a culmination of everything that we've talked about. IBA practice, SBA, modeling, Delta Math, so all of the good things that we're doing at Bailey to increase our student achievement. So at this time, if you guys have any questions for us.
I want to say, I think you guys did a great presentation. Everyone spoke so well and seemed so knowledgeable about your areas. Um, it's really nice to see you be able to speak off the cuff about that. You all were down, so if anyone was a little nervous, you did not shut up. Um, this, this makes me really proud, like, these are the kind of things that I, I think I'd say for everybody. This is why we volunteered to do what we do, to see results like that. So, uh, you guys did a fabulous job. We're so proud of you.
I would just add to that, the specific I shared that left the most pain honestly was the chronic absenteeism. And I think that, that really just, that's what drives all the rest of the data. To be, to learn, you have to be in school. To be, to learn, you have to be in school. And I think that all the work that you're doing outside of classrooms, engaging with the kids and making them excited to come in every day is what is maybe new also successful. And I'm very grateful as mom to get to work with you and me and have some of you guys teachers. I'm very grateful to all of you who were putting in parting those relationships with the kids that made them want to be successful, who believe that they can be successful. So thank you for outside of all the data. Thank you for that time that you spent.
And seeing their needs outside of the classroom, I think is really important. Like, you're looking at the whole kid, not just how they're doing in math, but like, you know, maybe they didn't score well on that test last night, couldn't study, can't edit, I mean, whatever. So it, it's like, it's so touching to see that you're caring about the whole kid, not just how they're doing in the classroom. Do you have any questions? I know I sort of finalized the beginning.
Oh, questions. I just want to concur. But I mean, just seeing the in every area, it's extremely impressive. Just whatever.
And we actually have a lot of questions. So that means you answered all of them before I can ask them. So that was really good.
And that's some kind of two facts.
I know, right? Tara, can you like workshop on how to put together the?
It's a team effort. Everybody, everybody out there, not one person.
We're u- we're usually, you know, when the state's coming, we're really, we can't wait for it to get here. And then this guy really did a terrific job. Congratulations for all of the work. And again, even putting feet in the presentation. Thank you. Make it another second to, uh,
Absolutely. Go home, have dinner, be drunk.
The Italian, the trip is, they're here tonight. If you want to do them now and then you can vote on it later.
Can, um, I can motion to add them to the?
They're, they're actually on the agenda, but I, we could just bring them up now so they can talk about what and they really seriously noticed because they need to start fundraising.
Do you need us to have a microphone?
All right. Well, thank you very much. We're really appreciative that you put us on the agenda for this. We're really hoping that, that you are allowing us to do this. But if you don't know who I am, so I am Kim Aitken. I am the World Languages Department Head and I also teach Italian.
And I'm Anna Porto. I'm Italian here. And I've been here for fourteen years. Both of my kids go, um, one graduate and one is freshman.
Okay. So what we would like to do is in April of twenty-twenty-seven, take a group of students to Italy during the week of April break. So we don't have exact dates because obviously that calendar is not out yet, but that's what we are looking for. So the trip would be through a, uh, tour company that we were brought to the attention. We get the emails through all kinds of organizations that we, we are part of and, um, but it is called Super Ciao and they focus on making, they only do, I forgot the number, but they only do a certain amount of tours a year and they focus just on your school. So it would just be a tour for just students and whoever would like to go for West Haven High School. Um, the trip would be ten days, eight nights. So there might be a night or two that they, they would have to miss school because of when we leave. Also, we don't know the April break and that would fall. Um, but the trip would start off, we would land in Venice and we would explore Venice. We would head down to Florence, make our way down to Rome, into Sorrento, Pompeii, and then we would end at the island of Capri, um, in the, the Noculi area. So that's what we would do. We would have a bus that would transport us from city to city. Um, we would have our own tour guide with us the entire time, our own bus driver. So it's one group, one, one team that is together, the tour guide and the bus driver. Um, do you have questions for us? What can we tell you about the trip? So we're hoping to take twenty-twenty-one, um, the cost for each student or each participant would be with twenty-one, four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
And that's all inclusive?
That's all inclusive except for spending money. And then any additional insurance?
Correct. So, um, everything is include, include, except, uh, American, additional American insurance. So they do provide insurance for, um, the European part, but they always recommend, you know, over insurers. So there will be probably something else that, um, families would have to pay. But, um, breakfast dinner is included, all the stays, uh, and hotels, transportation, flight tickets. We would have to probably coordinate how to get all the kids from West Haven to J F K. Um, so that would be probably additional because we would probably want to take a coach bus altogether and just rely on everybody bringing their own kid there. Um, but that cost is, we, we understand this is a lot of money, uh, for families. But, um, it is very competitive as far as tours. Uh, it's not, you know, everything is organized, everything is pre-planned. So I feel very safe and confident that this company takes American high schoolers abroad all the times. Recently, Derby High School went with them and they had packed the last time and they are planning a second tour again um, in Derby for twenty-twenty-seven. That's how excited they were and happy with that company.
And that insurance would cover like any illness, disease case that he's got sick while they were on there and travel?
Yes.
Any, any travel issues that they might have as well? Like, it's like all encompassing insurance or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You have the twenty-one kids, how many chaperones will they share?
So that would be three chaperones. So the money would be, that would be on them if they could, right? So if there were a group of people, if they were interested in going on the trip, but there were a group of people that wanted to try to put together some fundraisers. I mean, obviously that's a possibility, but that's something that we would have to figure out down the line because we don't know how many kids want to, would definitely want to go. We did have a parent interest meeting. Uh, we had about eighteen people go on the Zoom and we had fourteen, we sent out a survey to those people who were on the Zoom meeting and fourteen said that they were definitely interested. And that was including some of those people were, you know, including multiple children or a spouse or the children and one of the parents. So we do, we do have interest. And they represented the cost as well. So they know how much it, it will be.
Is the cost dependent on how many people? Or is it the stuff?
If we, twenty-one would be the four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. If we got more than that, so if there were thirty kids or thirty participants, it would bring it down a little bit. So the more that you have, the less it would be. And obviously, nothing, we haven't signed with anything. So that's what they told us. Nothing is set in stone until we get the okay. And then we start the planning. So as soon as we get the okay, then we can start having a meeting. We're going to have a Zoom meeting with the company, with the people who are interested. And then that's when they would put their deposit down and they can work out payment plans. So it's flexible with the company also. So if they want to, you know, have as many payments per, you know, whether it be bi-weekly or monthly, or if they could just pay the whole amount. You know, everybody's situation is different. So they would work that out with the tour company, not with us. So that would be, we don't, we don't collect any of the money that goes straight to the tour company. So we want the twenty-one. That's what we're looking for.
So if you don't get twenty-one, it's not, it's not going to happen.
Fourteen would be two chaperones. So I believe if there's fourteen children or fourteen paid bank guests, uh, two chaperones. So, uh, we may have missed eight there ago. And if we get twenty-one uh, people, there would be Ms. Riker who teaches French, who already chaperoned several, uh, trips to Canada to Quebec with other students. So she has experience.
And safety, do they do, they have their own programs for students, like safety? They obviously, they will land, land.
Yeah. So we, we, they don't get to just wander around. It's a very tight schedule. So they would be on the bus traveling because when you go from city to city, it does take a while depending on where we're going. Um, and when we get to those cities, we will have a tight schedule of we're here. You know, so if we're, let's say that we're in Florence, we'll go to a museum and then we'll go to a piazza. And then maybe you get a little bit of time for lunch, but everything is, is very, um, scripted and, and it's very planned out.
You'll be, all be in the same geographical location.
Yes, we would all be in the same hotel. Hopefully we would be all near each other in rooms. We would be, you know, we would be monitoring them at all times. So, yes.
And, um, I just want to, uh, say that, you know, our kids would be on that bus traveling with us and with the Italian tour guide who has everything planned. There are several, uh, tours that are scheduled and activities that are done in certain locations. And, uh, again, we are not merging with another school. If there's fourteen students or twenty-one, they will provide that size of a bus for us. And we are not, you know, traveling with another school from, I don't know, Jersey or something. Uh, so, and again, we, we teach, most of the kids, um, showed interest or I know them from, you know, soccer or anything in West Haven. So I believe most of the people that were interested were phenomenal students. So I would hope, safety-wise, you know, they are kids that we would love to expose to, you know, European country, but I also believe they are well-behaved children.
The safety and that, or in fact, that's why I say that, that our guidance must be general.
Yours is going to be an Italian tour guide that knows what's going on. Um, I'm going to say I just recently went and I'll leave with my own daughter in April. And I really, I mean, big pocketing is happening in New York. It could happen in Target or Walmart here as well. Uh, so that part, yes, it is a concern, but I really felt very safe when I went with my daughter.
And we're not limiting it to just Italian students. We're opening it to anyone who is interested. So if they take, uh, one of the Spanish teachers in the department, asked, just asked me the other day, one of my students was really interested in it. And of course, we want it's to be exposed to Europe and see what it's like and, and get out of our little bubble here in America and go see what it's like to be in another country and, and see the history. And it's just fascinating how different it is over there versus here.
When it comes to fundraising, this is roughly a weekly question from the parent. It's a meeting that I did, that's all. Papa doesn't work, but families are paying the company directly to say something that can be facilitated through the district that someone would be responsible for trapping students and funding fundraisers and getting the disbursement to to that numbers on their, actually for them on their behalf.
So that would be something that, as, if we were able to move forward with this, then that would, we would have to figure that out. Um, we can talk to the tour company. We would, Anna and I had talked about maybe if there was some kind of fundraising, with fundraising committee, the parents maybe monitored and, or came up with ideas because I know that the West D community have a lot of great ideas when it comes to fundraising. Um, so that would be something that would come later. We can't think about that until we know this is for sure going to happen.
Also, I would like to say that, you know, there will be definitely a system where if, you know, you're, you are fundraising for your own child. And, and so you're helping with that payment. Because obviously it is a huge chunk of money. So, um, again, with Ms., um, De Martino had some ideas already. So there are some very, very, uh, strong moms behind these students that are always coming up with some ideas.
Can they do any kind of Italian dinner? Please let us know because definitely.
We actually have, I think it's either we're going to do a pizza making or a pasta making, um,
Make sure the humor gets out.
We just have to let them know which one we want. But I think we do that a little bit closer to, oh, for fundraising, you're talking about. Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah. I thought you meant that you're in Italy. Yeah.
One of the interests that Aaron was the competitor. So we're hoping maybe we can brainstorm. Darren, there are some amazing Italian businesses here. So definitely that deadline, um, probably food.
So incredible. And I'm so impressed that there's so many kids that are interested and still all compete together. Um, some of our kids probably never had this opportunity or not for, while reaching out and get set up. So I'm really excited to see this.
I agree. I, you know, I, I run the top order, well, truly, we're going to take about seventy-five kids, hundred kids to, um, this year Charlotte, North Carolina, but Orlando for since two thousand and ten every year. And it is a huge undertaking as an adult to be willing to take on that responsibility. And the two of you, um, offering to do that, to take it to a whole other country, I think is a great opportunity for these kids. And I thank you for, um, making that sacrifice to be willing to take on that responsibility to do that. I think that's a great, uh, a great idea, a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to have the vote on that later on in the meeting. You're welcome to stay. Uh, if you want, the, the meeting should go further with this.
So I'm going to be kind of the worker. It sounds like, uh, your mindset of approval, I would recommend.
Yeah. I'm sorry. It sounds like you're leaning towards approval. My recommendation would be if you do approve it, uh, maybe we bring you guys back. Um, maybe in the springtime where you give us like an idea of where you are with the fundraising, with the numbers and whatnot. So, but, um, again, um, certainly it's up to the board.
I think that's a good idea.
Didn't they do this like several years ago? Cause I don't remember.
I don't think a workshop used to take international.
Maria Delvecchio went from Bailey, I think, a few years ago. They went, um, it may have gone to Italy or I'm, I'm not sure. I, I know they went to Europe somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. I, um, yeah, some of you may have seen it on our website. Um, the other day I was, um, I came down to the cafeteria. We actually honored, um, Gina Raci, who's one of our food service workers. Um, I think it's really important we mention her. She actually, uh, performed the Heimlich maneuver on one of her colleagues and probably saved her life. Um, so we, uh, we brought her some flowers. We gave her an extra personal day, uh, for the year. Um, but I thought what was very interesting, uh, was the thing she said to me. They're, they're really a nice group of people that work here. They're very excited. They're very happy to be down here working. They're, Nick really brought up a, 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 a nice operation here. But I thought one of the most interesting things that, um, Gina told me was she said, you know, I want you to know, we, we get training every year by our nurses. So we have to give the credit to, to the nurses because every year we, we get trained in the Heimlich maneuver. So I said, wow, I said, you know, sometimes you think you just go through the motions and you do things because you have to do them. Um, fortunately Gina paid attention and, uh, you know, again, saved a life as a result. So if you, it was on our website, but if you haven't seen it, um, it is certainly a big shout out to Gina for, uh, for her effort. That's all I have.
Yeah, just a couple of things that I've done. I'll definitely get any of my, wow.
I left on each of your play settings here. Well, um, we have the New Haven Symphony. I know they're playing in December. Um, but this is the individual performances for third and fourth grade that they are kindly doing in a school. Some of them they've done already where they bring in an instrument and they have actually a book that goes along with it. And they talk to the kids about the symphony, playing an instrument and trying to gain in, um, interest in that. Um, look forward to doing the accountability report, um, for you in January. I know all my staff is getting ready for that. Um, the other thing is, The other thing is, I know the student reps here talked about the musical this week. They are also doing, the children's theater is doing on December fifth. For, I think it's our third grades are doing North Pole Scott Talent for the third grades coming in and watching it. That's I think nine fifteen on December fifth, if you're around and you're interested in going in that too. It's nice to have, invite the younger students to see what the theater is like in the high school. But maybe they come to see it later.
I may be wrong, but I think that's student written and student directed, right?
No, I think that they bought a script. Yeah. This is yours.
Okay.
But it is student directed. They decide their parks. They decide the costumes.
And it was like a big thing. They, they pretty much ran the whole thing for that program. And I think this breaks the general. I've had a couple of questions.
Thank you for the bus numbers. I forget the formula, the number of students per bus for high school, middle, elementary. Any of those numbers concerning the buses?
You know what? We've worked, we've been working with the principals. And when you asked for the numbers and we saw, you know, some of them did jump out. Both Tara and Rob, the first thing they said was, first of all, those are the power school numbers. They're not necessarily the number of kids that are riding the bus. High school kids, there tends to be less because they get rides. By the way, there's a lot of scooters out here, which I'm getting a little more concerned as the weather gets colder. But I give kids credit for taking their scooters to school. So they're finding a way to get here. And like Tara mentioned, for example, three days a week, they have a late bus because so many kids are staying after. So that reduces the number. Other than that, Kerrigan and below, the numbers look really, really good. In fact, in my opinion, they're a little bit low. It's difficult, you know, do push Craig. In fairness, it's difficult to combine buses just because of where they have to go. But, you know, we do try to push him when those things, when we see like the numbers are very low. But we're, again, those are power school numbers. And the numbers that were high, we, we actually, again, we contacted Rob and Tara and they're comfortable right now. But the, just so you know, the biggest, I know it's our high school kids, but technically they can fit seventy kids on a bus. And we didn't get to that number. I thought the highest number I saw was sixty-seven. But I would say, you know, fifty-five to sixty is the most that are on any bus.
Also, thank you for the enrollment numbers. It was nice to see Kerrigan and Bailey not pushing thousands.
Yeah, it looks like they're coming down. In that.
Where we are this, I think those are state consistent.
You know about, I noticed the same thing. Yeah, we're down a little bit of Kerrigan and Bailey, which is great because that'll reduce the high school, but even the high school's down about a hundred kids. I, I will tell you that according to the enrollment projections that we have and we get one, we get one twice a year from NESTEC, which I believe we pass out to you guys when we get it as members. We're right about where we should be and it's supposed to go down over the course of ten years.
All right, word reports.
I just wanted to thank Tina Jones and Mariso for their work with the cold drive. I took it very greatly on, on today. I did check in with, she sent a, a handout with three hundred and twenty votes to West Even's students. And the UNH baseball team was there. This is the second that they're volunteering at time. Which I thought was pretty incredible because sometimes you have trouble finding those volunteers that are students who are still the kids and used over that to, I think, outside of the box and get the kids excited. They were all their, like, high kids. They were so excited to help those kids find the most perfect. So they're asking for their favorite colors and it was just really nice to see them together to support the students that.
You guys have just been really good with our volunteering this year with all different programs up there. Sending their students down to help bodies speak. Really, a really good partner. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October twentieth meeting. Motion by that second. Second by Patrick. Any discussion? See, not all in favor. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion for D two twenty-five dash seventy-eight and twenty-five dash seventy-nine as all-inclusive. Motion by them. All motion by Heather. Second by Kim. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. I want to entertain a motion to approve D three twenty-five dash eighty. Motion by Patrick. Second by Heather. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The last on our agenda, the hot item, D four twenty-five dash eighty-one. I will entertain a motion to approve the Italy twenty-twenty-seven trip. Motion by Heather. Second by Kim. Any discussion?
No, I think it's a great, best, that's, it's a great opportunity for the kids to know the best.
Agreed, agreed. And I, yeah, and I also like the suggestion of having them come back as, as they move through the process to keep us updated on, on what's going on in fundraising and all that. So we definitely would like to do that. Anyone else? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? It's like that carries unanimously as well. Could I impose upon you Superintendent Calero to let them know that they're motion carrying? Thanks, Raj. All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to, the rest of the agenda is informational. I'll entertain a motion to.